Made it some reason why it seemed advantageous to them, who knows?
Yeah.
Counting down the seconds here, huh?
Rachel's gotta gotta come up with something more for the next 10 seconds.
Yeah, well, I'm just re-sending my last email to you guys with my attachments, just so it's at the top of your inbox. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
All right, Mr. Chairman, it being seven fifteen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this in separate motions. I move that we continue. Are we continuing it? We haven't had this, that we, that we moved the new public hearing, seven fifteen, seven twenty-one, seventy, seventy-five, South Street, to the June, no, to the next meeting on May fifteenth at seven fifteen.
Tech, just a friendly amendment, you open it and then continue without testimony.
Oh, we open and continue instead of just moving it off?
Special permit, you have sixty-five days from the receipt of that to open it. So I just want to make sure you guys don't get into a constructive approval process. So if you just open, continue without testimony to that date, you'll be.
Thank you for the administrative correct. I accept the friendly amendments.
So we have a motion on seven fifteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Boasi.
Aye.
Mr. English?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Orbin?
Aye.
Mr. Woodhams?
Aye.
Mike McKnight, aye, seven in favor, no one opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Mr.
That was one vote.
That we continue the public hearing for thirteen Franklin Street to June fifth at seven fifteen.
Second.
Technically, that one wasn't opened at your last meeting, so you need to open.
Oh, is this, is this, did we close the other one they had open and this is a new one?
It's kind of like a reinstatement thing, but just to clear the record, you know, like similar to what we did for last time, just.
I bow to the greater understanding of the nuances and I accept the friendly amendment.
His motion is to open without testimony. And can, uh.
Uh, no, I'm not.
Excuse me, folks, thank you, put on mute.
All right, I'm off now.
Mr. O'Neal, thank you, okay.
Yeah.
Um, he keeps going off and on, I'm sure he doesn't realize it.
Thank you. Your motion to clarify is to open and continue without testimony to.
Continue without testimony to June fifth.
Thank you.
Seven fifteen.
Have a motion, did we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Boasi.
Aye.
Mr. English?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Orbin?
Aye.
Mr. Woodhams?
Aye.
Mike McKnight, aye, seven in favor, no one opposed, motion carries.
And finally, I move that we continue the public hearing for ten Commerce Boulevard till later in the meeting and open the continued public hearing on the MBT zoning bylaw amendments.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Mr. Boasi.
Aye.
Mr. English?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Orbin?
Aye.
Mr. Woodhams?
Aye.
Mike McKnight, aye, seven in favor, no one opposed, motion carries.
Nope, I can only hear through your, through your phone, that's it.
Mr. O'Neal, we're going to ask you to fix your muting situation, please. Vice Chairman Gallo, do you want to open your Board of Selectmen meeting?
Thank you, Chairman McKnight. We do, we'll do a roll call vote, a roll call vote, Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, here.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, here.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Rouse, here.
Chris Gallo, here.
Thank you, and is the EDC opening a hearing tonight, Rachel?
They did post for, um.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I did hear late this evening that they will not have a quorum. So I, I believe they, they have a posted meeting, but they will not be opening their meeting so that anyone from the EDC will be speaking as a resident, not on behalf of the EDC, so they will not be opening a meeting.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Sweet, and recognizing Mr. Sweet here is in the meeting as well.
Present, thank you.
Um, as a, as a matter of the planning board at least, and then I'll turn over Vice Chair Gallo.
The Board of Assessors is also here, sorry.
Okay, as a just as a attendee from the town, got it?
They have, no, the Board of Assessors are also here.
Board of Assessors, do they need to open their public, a public hearing for?
Yes.
Okay. And who is here on, um, for the Board of Assessors to open your public hearing?
Yep, Tom DePlacido, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. A couple of our members are having a difficulty hearing. It'll be. Okay, and but I'd like to make a motion to open our meeting with, uh.
Second.
And, uh.
Irene, Irene.
Irene, can you hear? That's all right, the two of us here, that's enough of a quorum to open up the meeting between it and ourselves. All right.
All right.
Are yells at?
Sorry, I'm moving and muting.
It sounds like Mr. O'Neal has feedback and whenever he turns off his mute, we hear that, we hear ourselves talking through his.
Yes, I think, uh, so just as a matter for the planning board, I'll turn it over to the other, other members here who have, have opened public hearings. Planning Board has been meeting on this, have kept their public hearings open. Our goal was from the last meeting was to start to peel back the work that Rachel and our consultant had done on the evaluation of all the sites in town and better understand how we got to the two and maybe back that up to understand what other sites are out there so that we could evaluate those, look at them, understand what the process was in terms of either disqualifying them or saying they didn't meet the statute requirements. That would be the intent of the, of the planning board. We have been communicating within town about having a bit more of a, a working session in terms of different, different boards, different members, and really trying to make sure that we are communicating effectively across all of the boards in town so that the information is being shared and as a, as this is a complicated and fairly large decision the town has to make, making sure that we're collaborating properly and, and hearing each other and making sure that that information is flowing. So that would be the board's, Planning Board's intent, Vice Chair Gallo, if you want to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, great to be with you and your board, and to your point. Conversations started between you and Chairman Botash on our board, and you guys agreed of the importance to keep our boards in constant communication. You and I had a great conversation about trying to push that forward and do the same. And I thought it was just very, it's timely for us to just give a quick summary of the Select Board's position on our multi-pronged strategy. I know that, you know, for the intent of this public hearing tonight, we would have the, I think we agreed to have the Select Board read through quickly some of the financial impact statements that we've received from some of the, the, the department heads, boards and committees in town. As you alluded to, you were, you're, the planning board would take the lead with the identification or re, you know, identification of the parcels, potentially adding a couple that have been recommended. And then we also wanted to quickly just share with the planning board and the other boards and committees and residents on this meeting that, you know, there's also a legal challenge going on in other communities and we wanted to just give a quick update as to how we're handling that and what we have planned coming up shortly. So with that being said, you know, people always ask us, people ask me, you know, what we're doing to educate the residents about the MBTA community zoning. And the purpose of this meeting, as we discussed, is to get the necessary feedback from the other important boards, committees and residents so that we can provide an update to our multi-pronged strategy that the town has taken regarding the zoning ordinance. So real quick, we have three, three-pronged strategy. Prong or step number one is we try to have and continue to have open and direct dialogue with the state, trying to get relief on number of units, have more say in our town's future and just to get a seat at the table per our town charter and local zoning policies. We've always taken the approach that we want the voters, not the state legislators, to make the important impactful decisions relating to our town's future. We've been in communication, a one-size-fits-all mentality will not work here in Rentham for residents and it's not in their best interests. And we've had multiple meetings with members of the governor's team, you know, with results really not changing at this point. So prong number two was the identification of the parcels. We've asked the planning board to re-identify the parcels that were deemed as potentially not a good fit from the first presentation. We've also asked the planning board to add a couple of, of additional ones that could be decent candidates, including the Rentham outlets. Prong, step number two, has a few options in itself. So option one, the townspeople can vote the zoning ordinance down, like some of the other towns have done, and not to zone any parcels as MBTA. This has potential positive and negative impacts of not being eligible for certain grants that we need to continue to dive into and see how that would impact our community. We also have a second option, that we zone something that we don't think or want could be built. Right? So there's other towns that are doing what's called, as you guys know, paper zoning, just to be compliant with the MBTA communities, with the ordinance. But the intent is really never to build them, so that is an option for the townspeople to vote at town meeting. The third option is to zone something with the intent to build, but has the least negative impact on the existing, existing town resources and town services. And prong or step number three is the legal challenge to the enforceability or constitutionality of this zoning ordinance. Selectwoman Rouse will focus on this really quickly later and give an update to this group as to what other towns have been doing and that we have an event scheduled, informational purposes only event scheduled on May ninth in our community. So with that being said, Chairman McKnight, I just wanted to give a quick summary of where we are, how we got to this point and kind of our, our plan and path forward. If it's okay with you, I'm gonna turn it over to the individual Select Board members and have them read the, quickly read, and then obviously we know we have a full agenda, so we're gonna be brief, but read the impact studies from the various department heads that we've had. I do want to make a quick disclaimer, though. This information will be available on the MBTA Communities Project Link and these are only estimates. They're not, this is not all accurate data. There's way too many unknowns for us to ask the department heads to really hone in on, you know, financial analysis that we can all hang our hats on. It's, it's, it's preliminary in nature and it's not essentially accurate, so I want to be full, I want to have full disclosure there. But we, what we try to do, Mr. Chair, is say to the, the department heads, hey, if we threw seven hundred and fifty units in any location in town, can you give us a rough idea of the impacts and needs that that would have on your departments, if that makes sense? So with that being said, I'm gonna hand it over to the first person, Select Board, Selectman Bill Harrington, who's gonna read the Public Works Financial Impact by Brian Antonoli, a DPW Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's a letter from Brian Antonoli, MBTA Communities Effects on DPW Services in Rentham. My understanding that seven hundred and fifty units would be built. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, Norfolk County averages two point five three people per household. Some potential impacts to be considered regarding DPW services would be would include trash, roadways, stormwater drainage, staffing, work orders and drinking water. First, trash, no impact likely, development would be private, so wouldn't be included in the town's solid waste program. Roadways, minimal impact but negative, the roadways and the development would be private, so no responsibility for plowing or roadway maintenance. Though the vehicles will be most likely exit to state roads, some will use town roads. The increase on town roads will increase wear, tear of infrastructure similar to any development. Three, stormwater drainage, potential for negative impact, depending on the amount of pavement and building sizes, most likely end up with less previous area for stormwater leach back into earth. This would hurt groundwater discharge and water quality in streams, lakes, et cetera, as less water would filter through the air. Also, potential for positive impact if the stormwater is kept on site following a proper approved plan, this could help keep potential pollutants via stormwater runoff out of the town's stormwater system, also help lessen volume going into the stormwater system. Four, staffing, negative impact. DPW is already working with limited staff, we do the best we can. The town has grown over the last several decades and the staffing certainly hasn't kept pace. Adding nineteen hundred plus new people to town will certainly increase the frequency of calls for service. That more people using town parking lots, parks, common, driving on both town and state roads, that's more people reporting issues with all of that. Potholes, tree issues, snow-related issues, et cetera. All that requires staff to take the call, look at the problem and then solve the issue. All things DPW currently does, but will certainly increase in frequency. That all puts more stress on the staff and resources, even if the units are built on private ways. Five, drinking water supply, negative impact. This would lead to an average daily increase of one hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-five gallons per day. This would equate to forty thousand, I'm sorry, forty million, seven hundred eighty-three four hundred and thirty gallons more water usage per year. See Appendix A for breakdown. This would further stress the already stressed Charles River Basin as the majority of the town's water is drawn from the Charles River Basin. This would also lead to increased costs and disinfection and corrosion control that is directly related to the amount of water pumped and treated. Estimated chemical cost of nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents per year, see Appendix B for breakdown. Positive impact, revenue would increase an estimated two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and nine per year, see Appendix C for breakdown. Respectfully submitted, Brian Antonoli, Director of Public Works, Town of Rentham. And then the Appendix A for the yearly water increase math, fifty-nine gallons per Rentham resident per day based off twenty twenty-three annual statistical reports, two point five people per household average U.S. Census Bureau would be seven hundred and fifty units. Two hundred, two point five three people times seven fifty is eighteen hundred ninety-seven point five additional residents on average. Eighteen hundred ninety-eight new residents at fifty-nine gallons per day, hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty new gallons additional per day. One hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two gallons per day, three hundred and sixty-five days is forty million, eight hundred and seventy-three, four hundred and thirty gallons per additional year. You've got Appendix B for chemical usage, FY twenty-three is a hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars spent on water treatment chemicals. Three hundred and twenty-four million gallons water treated in twenty twenty-three, forty million, eight hundred and seventy-three and forty additional gallons at that rate of point one two six rounded to thirteen percent. Be a hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five times point thirteen for a nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollar increase in chemical costs. Appendix C, revenue increase, six dollars and forty-six cents per thousand for first billing tier. Forty million, eight seventy-three, four thirty gallons per additional times six forty-six is two hundred and sixty-four million, forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven point eighty divided by a thousand is two hundred and sixty-four thousand, forty-two dollars. This was computed only using the lowest tier, the actual increase in revenue could be reasonably anticipated higher. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington. This time I'm gonna ask Selectwoman Rouse to read Rentham Public Schools and King Philip Regional School Financial Impact summaries.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. From Alan Cameron, Superintendent of Rentham Public Schools, dear members of the Rentham Select Board, I am writing in response to your request for information regarding the impact to the Rentham Public Schools of the town adopting a zoning district that would allow for multifamily housing. The proposed zoning district change would be in response to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority MBTA Community Zoning Law. The Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, conducted an enrollment projection for Rentham Public Schools as part of the Roderick Elementary School Building Project. MSBA considered the impact of potential housing developments in our town, including development associated with the MBTA Community, Community Zoning Law. They estimated an increase of about fifty students in kindergarten through grade six. The fifty additional students would add to the challenges associated with the limited space at Delaney School and the Roderick School. The district is in dire need of additional classrooms, meeting spaces, science and technology engineering labs, gymnasiums, visual art rooms and performing arts spaces. Fortunately, the MSBA-supported building project at Roderick School will significantly improve the situation. Without it, the district would struggle to meet the needs of the students. Please net, no, please let me know if I can assist you further with this issue. Thank you for all you do for Rentham, yours truly, Alan Cameron, Superintendent of Rentham Public Schools. Rich Droule, Superintendent of King Philip Schools. We at King Philip do not have anything to add related to the analysis of our department at this time except to say we would definitely fit more students in our two buildings as King Philip's enrollment has declined by about two hundred students over the past five to ten years. So we could fit a couple hundred more students, but it were, if, excuse me, but if it, if that were to happen, we would obviously need to add more teachers and staff if our enrollment were to increase considerably. Thanks, Rich Droule, Superintendent of King Philip Schools.
Thank you, Selectwoman Rouse. And just on that note from the schools, we are waiting, didn't we ask for, and we are waiting for some further financial analysis from School Committee Chair Phil Jordan? Go ahead, sorry.
Yes, we are waiting for that analysis and as soon as we receive that, we'll make that available to the public.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, last but not least, I'm gonna ask Selectman Jim Anderson to read the Fire and Police Summary Impact Statements.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is, uh, from Chief Marino, Department of Fire Department, dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Dear Honorable Members of the Board, the task you have requested is extremely dependent upon a vast number of variables. I cannot speculate on the exact impacts of such a project, though first knowing the entire scope. Location, type of building, occupancy and occupants' physical and mental capacity will play a significant role in the various impacts to emergency services provided by the fire department. Regardless of the scope, we already face significant challenges with staffing and equipment. Any project of this magnitude will require a modest increase in staffing, equipment, training and other resources. Please see the generic areas of concern below to form a basic opinion of the impacts. Generic overview. The addition of a seven hundred and fifty unit dense residential project in a community significantly impacts fire, emergency medical services. The nature of this impact generally involves both increased demand for services and the need for adjustments in infrastructure, personnel and operational strategies. Blowout the key areas of impact and considerations for fire and EMS services. One, increased demand for services. Emergency calls, a larger population concentrated in a high density area will naturally lead to an increase in the number of emergency calls. This includes both fire-related incidents and medical emergencies. Diverse needs in dense residential settings that can be a greater diversity in the types of emergencies ranging from standard medical emergencies to more complex situations like fires and in high-rise structures requiring specialized response strategies. Two, infrastructure requirements. Access to water supply. Adequate infrastructure to support firefighting efforts, such as sufficient water supply and access points, fire trucks is crucial. High-rise buildings in particular require considerations like standpipes, sprinkler systems and fire hydrants. Facilities upgrades. There might be a need to upgrade existing fire and EMS facilities, or even build a new one to ensure rapid response times and adequate coverage for new development. Three, resource allocation. Staffing, an increase in the number of personnel might be necessary to handle the additional workload. This includes just frontline, excuse me, this includes not just frontline firefighters and EMS workers, but also support staff for logistic bill and administrative tasks. Equipment, additional resources such as fire engines, ambulances and special rescue equipment may be required to handle emergencies in high-rise buildings. Training, number four, training and preparedness. Specialized training. Personnel may require additional training specific to challenges presented by high-density living environments such as high-angle rescues, managing fires in the high-rise buildings and navigating complex building layouts. Community safety education. Programs to educate residents about fire safety, emergency preparedness and preventative measures can be crucial preventing emergencies, ensuring a swift response when they occur. Response times. Impact on response times. The added traffic and population density can affect the response times for emergencies. Strategically located fire and EMS stations can help minimize this impact. Zoning and planning. Coordination with urban planners and developers to ensure that emergency services access is a core consideration in the layout of a new department. Excuse me, in the new development. Number six, regulatory and compliance issues. Building codes and regulations. Ensuring that new constructions comply with the latest fire safety standards in building codes is critical. This might include provisions for fire-resistant materials, proper exit routes and emergency evacuation plans. Increase enforcement and review. Increased staffing and fire prevention bureau to perform initial inspections and annual inspection to congregate living will be a necessity. Number seven, collaboration with other agencies. Integrated response planning. Collaboration with the police, local hospitals and other emergency services is essential for effectively emerging effective emergency management in densely populated areas. Mutual aid agreements. Strengthening, establishing mutual aid agreements with neighboring jurisdictions can provide additional support and resource sharing in times of large-scale emergencies. Conclusion. For fire and EMS departments, the development of a seven hundred and fifty unit dense residential project necessitates comprehensive review and potential expansion of current capabilities. Effective planning and resource management are crucial to ensure the safety and well-being of both residents within the new development and the community at large. Proactive measures include strategic planning, investment in resources and community engagement are essential components of successful integration of such a significant residential project into the community's fabric. Hope this helps with the basic overview. As you know, this is a very complex topic. Please reach out to me with any questions, concerns, respectfully, Tony Marino, Fire Chief. Now I'll read an email from Chief McGrath. Good evening. My little concern would be that the potential impact the development of this size would have would be on calls for service. If this was to move forward, I would request additional police officers over a period of years. Our current staffing levels are insufficient to handle the, the added calls resulting from new developments in town including Ledgeview with its hotel apartments and assisted living facility. I'm confident staffing, confident staffing plan can be achieved with the town administration. Respectfully, Chief William Graff. That's it, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson. So Chairman McKnight, that's the, the quick summary of the department heads that we've received. The only other update that we could provide, not the only one, but the, another one that I think is very important for you, your board, the other board, the, the other boards present and the residents listening would be a quick update on the legal challenge aspect from Selectwoman Rouse. And she could hopefully tell us all about an event that we have scheduled to bring the residents some additional information in that matter.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I think that when we started on this journey back, the Select Board started on this journey back earlier in the year, our intent was to make sure that all the residents had as much information as possible to make the most informed decision for them and the town, since this is probably the most important decision that residents will be making for some time. And in doing so, as Mr. Vice Chair went through the different options that the residents will be making decisions on, one of them is really understanding what it would mean if we vote no, what it would mean with the paper zoning and the third with the legal challenges. So we have invited Michael Walsh to join. So we have invited Michael Walsh to join us on May ninth in Rentham at the Fisk Library in the Sweat Room at seven P M. He and his team have been doing presentations throughout the Commonwealth called myths and truth related to the MBTA. So he goes through a presentation giving correct information to a lot of questions residents within Rentham and other towns in the Commonwealth have had related to the MBTA. Is it constitutional? What does the MBTA mandate really include? What are we really required to do? Do we have to do this? All of those questions are answered throughout his presentation as part of an educational forum for different residents in different towns. So he will be joining us again on May ninth. It will be at the Fisk Library in the Sweat Room at seven P M. I ask that you attend the meeting. I also ask that you spread the word. Again, this decision will be affecting each resident in our town for generations to come, and we, the Select Board, want to make sure that you have all the necessary information to make the best decision for yourself and for this town.
Thank you, Selectwoman Ross. Mr. Chairman, at this time, the only other thing that I'd like to say before handing it back to you is that we do, we have, the Select Board has already started the conversation about potentially marking some dates down for a special town meeting that we can vote on this. We feel like we want to have a meeting before our end-of-the-year meeting. Depending on which way this goes, we might have to, you know, it will affect the November meeting. So the Select Board and Tom Manager Sweet and his staff are already looking into possible dates and expenses to have a special meeting, but at this point, it's our opinion that it's necessary so that, again, we can give the residents ample time and information to make the best decision for the town. So with that, I thank you so much for the collaboration. I thank you for letting us be a part of your meeting, and hopefully now I can turn it back over to you, and we can discuss anything you'd like to update us on with parcel review.
And great. Thank you, Vice Chair Gallo and Select Board members. I think all of that was very helpful. The more information we have, the better. We're all going to be informed to make a decision. I may turn it over at this time, maybe brief Mr. DePlacido if if you have any comments that either the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, EDC, or the members or residents who are here would like for information from your perspective on how this development would impact the town.
Well, I think from a Board of Assessors and Assessment of Properties point of view with everything, once the, you know, we're down to, you know, a critical shortlist of maybe just one or two properties, that the Board of Assessors be given the opportunity to see what the positive and negative impacts are of, you know, the zoning that's underlying and already in existence, if that is changed to MBTA Communities Act, how that either negatively or positively approaches, you know, actually works with the town as far as being a more of a positive impact or a negative impact. Obviously, we're hearing a lot of expenses here from the different departments, and we'd want to make sure that, you know, we actually rezone the most advantageous piece as far as revenue-producing and not actually take a piece of property off the tax roll that is actually, that has the potential to produce revenue for the town. So I think that's something that, once we're down to that shortlist, if the assessors could possibly take a look at that and give some input back to the Planning Board to help you make your decisions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. DePlacido. Before we move into, I think Rachel, you have a presentation. We're going to peel back the onion a bit on some of the sites and and understand how the decision was actually made to get to two final sites. Just run down the list of Planning Board members to see if you have any comments or questions while we have the Select Board here and while we have Mr. DePlacido here. So initially, Mr. Blasi, any?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. English?
None from me.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I just, Vice Chairman Gallo, do we have a accounting of the the resources that will be taken away if we decide not to go forward and comply with the law? That's the only question I have. I mean, I understand there's going to be a certain amount of added tax base and a certain amount of added expense to the town to accommodate these people. But what I haven't heard tonight, and I don't know if it's a knowable thing at this point, is, you know, there are a number of, I don't know, state funds that would no longer be available to the town that the town uses now. Do we have any accounting of all that available to the townsfolk?
So that's a great question. Through you, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Great question, Mr. Lawrence. We're still diving into that. That's part of this legal challenge to see if the state can pull these grant funds back. The grant funds, and I'll let Selectwoman Ross chime in as well, but to the best of my knowledge, the only grant funds that are potentially on the table for us to lose if we don't comply and if they're able to pull them from us are the Mass Works grants. I don't have the number. Hopefully, maybe Kevin Sweet does or Rachel of what we typically use per year in Mass Works grants, what potentially could be on the table if we chose not to vote this in. But at this time, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to see if Selectwoman Ross or Kevin Sweet had anything to add to that.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I would just add to that, Jim, that that would be part of the presentation that will be discussed on May ninth, since there's been a lot of misinformation in the media and just through discussions and individuals that have had that that has spread, you know, rumors that it could be, you know, different funds. That might not be true. So the attorney is going to go through exactly what would be impacted by the state and what the state can actually hold back in the Mass Works grants. So that should be covered on May ninth. And then I turn it over to Mr. Kevin Sweet for additional information.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Chair, the law itself, the Act for the MBTA Communities 3A Act is very specifically lists the grants that would be in jeopardy, and that is, as was stated, the Mass Works grant, some housing-related grants, housing choice-related grants, and it's very specific of those. It's hard to say definitively because we have seen firsthand some pretty liberal interpretations of that law. And a perfect example of that is the Town of Milton, who, as you probably, most of you are aware of, did not pass, it was, it was a an election where essentially they had a C-Wall grant that the state, once that happened, the state had pulled back. That certainly is not part of a Mass Works grant or some of these specific grants that were identified in the law or the act. So I think it's really unknown. We're starting to see, they're really the first first community that we're seeing this. And I think we've seen some pretty extreme interpretations, in my view, of the law. And I think at this point, it's sort of open-ended. What I will say, they're going under civil litigation through the court system. I think the state has a lot more flexibility to be able to pull back administrative things and grants that they have. So it's really hard to quantify what that would be. I will say the last Mass Works grant that the town received was a number of years ago, about eight years ago or so, and that was related to the water infrastructure improvement tied into the Ledgeview project with the upgrade of the water line down Route One specific to a mixed-use component and specific to the attraction of housing and commercial and retail. So that's the last grant we have received related to Mass Works. We have applied for others. But again, just a reminder, it is an unknown component at this point, and we've already seen them step outside of specifically what the law states would be in jeopardy. Hopefully that helps.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lawrence, any other questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Maloney?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. One is Selectwoman Ross, just to make you aware, you probably know this, but the Sagebrush Rebellion has expanded to Marshfield. They shot, their town meeting voted against a proposal, a proposed MBTA Communities plan sixty-three to thirty-seven. It was about a week ago, a week and a half ago. So so the dissatisfaction appears to be spreading, for what it's worth, and we'll learn more on May ninth, as you say. And the Milton response to the state's complaint, I think there's a very, there's a key factor in that. Milton's actually attacking the law at its root, basically saying that the executive branch of the state is creating legislation, not just issuing guidelines, and that they're exceeding their authority by doing so. So I think, for what it's worth, when we get to May ninth, I would be interested in hearing about some of those things from our guest. Last thing for me, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, Kevin made a good point about the Mass Works program and the extension of the water line down Route One. If the state insists on withholding funds for development like that, how does the state prosper? If we couldn't have built Ledgeview, we wouldn't have had more residential units, which is what we wanted there. So anyway, that's all. I'm sorry to editorialize, but I appreciated the presentation. I look forward to further discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Orban?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Woodhams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, for bringing up the point that I was going to make, which is, you know, has anybody figured out what the total financial impact is? And while I respect what has been said, you know, this is what the law says the state can and can't do, my my take on this whole thing from the very beginning, from the state's involvement, has been that the state's going to keep moving the goalposts until the state gets what the state wants. And I have no confidence that they're not going to just keep taking more and more pieces away to get towns and cities to comply. So, yeah, I just the money that we could potentially lose from what they say they can take away from us is bad enough, but I fear that they would keep going. They have not hesitated to change things whenever it suited them. And one of the other aspects that I think we have to think about, if we don't make a serious effort to come up with some, you know, form of compliance on this, is how much will it cost the town to defend itself against a likely lawsuit from the Attorney General's Office? You know, aside from losing funds and grants, we now are talking about tens, or if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees to defend ourselves against a lawsuit, which if we lose it, we're still going to end up with a zoning. And the problem is, then the state's going to come in and say, okay, this is where you're going to put it, because you didn't do it voluntarily. We're going to tell you where it goes. So I understand trust me, I understand people's feelings on this. I'm I hate that the state is trying to force this on us, but I also think we need to look at things through a lens of, the reality is, if we don't do something, we will cause the town considerable cost and harm. And I think we need to make sure that while we certainly explore all avenues as far as legal challenges and that kind of thing, I think it's irresponsible if we don't come up with an honest plan that we've put forth that is something that we know that the state will approve. You know, it'd be easy to pick out a bunch of parcels that we know people aren't going to want to build on, and the state will reject it outright. They have said that one of the aspects of this development is it has to be considered can't remember the exact terms, but basically feasible for a developer to want to come in and build it. And if you put it on a piece of land that is going to be so cost-effective for a developer, that none of the developers are going to be willing to do it. The state will just reject that site as being unacceptable. And I know there's been a lot of talk about looking at other sites, and we certainly can look at that, but I think we need to be careful that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we finally come up with something, the town votes to approve it, and the state just rejects it, and then we're back to square one. And potentially under, you know, legal challenge at that point by the state. So that would be my my only comment at this time. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Woodhams.
Chair, do you mind if I just?
Please, Mr., sorry, Vice Chair Gallo, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to address Mr. Woodhams' comment. You know, I too have concerns, compliance or not compliance, but some of the things Mr. Woodhams shared are completely speculative at this point. That's the job and that's the intent of this board and this committee and this group of people is to figure out what the actual impacts are. You know, there are other communities besides Milton and Marshfield and Shrewsbury and Middleborough and the North Shore towns like Gloucester. The list is building of people that are not complying and are proposing legal challenges to this. My opinion is, we don't act out of fear. We act out of the facts that we have at hand, and right now, the facts at hand are there's way too many unknowns to make an educated decision, you know, to bring to the townspeople. Never once did we suggest that we don't give them an option of a buildable project. I think I was very clear in one of my prongs. We're going to leave that up to the townspeople. Our job is to give all of the information that we possibly can so that the townspeople can make the decision that they feel is best for us. One of the prongs, again, was we zone a very buildable project, and that is an option. Another option is, we paper zone a project that is likely not buildable, and a lot of towns have done that, and the state has not pushed back as of yet. They have been in compliance by doing that. So some of the things that you're saying, I don't know where you're hearing them, but this is why we need to all go to this May ninth meeting, because there's a lot of misinformation. I'm not saying that you're wrong, but there's a lot of misinformation going on out there, and I know that I'm not ready to make a decision this important or bring it to the townspeople with the current information that I have. I'd just like to see if any of the other Select Board members want to chime in on this before we move on from this point, because it is a very important one.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I think that you hit all the important pieces. There are a significant amount of towns that are fighting back, looking to join or have already joined Rockport's civil suit about this mandate. In addition, there is a group of citizens throughout the Commonwealth that have created a website called enoughma.org. I encourage residents to take a look at that. It gives some more information about the mandate, about misinformation that's being out there, and I will stress again with what Mr. Vice Chair Gallo has stated, the intent of May ninth, Thursday, next week, is to go over all of this misinformation that is being put out there. And the state has been using threatening words, even in our discussion on our February sixth meeting, when we had a visitor from the state come to that meeting. She brought up misinformation about our town and schools closing and just wrong information. So I really encourage you to educate yourself beyond, you know, just mass media. Go to some other websites that have information and come listen to the attorney that is representing different towns in this Commonwealth and has the right information legally related to this mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Ross. Anybody else from the Select Board like to make a comment before?
If I might, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. McKnight, thank you. Look, to Mr. Woodhams directly, at no point is anyone on this particular board trying to convince people not to do what is being pressed upon us. What we're trying to do is make the most accurate decision to bring to the people of the town to let them decide. The impact could be more dramatic than the cost to not do it. But these are things we don't know, and what we don't know is we don't we don't know what we don't know, and we certainly don't need to spread any type of fear into the blitz, if you will. It's just, it's an education that we all need, and it's a learning process, and we want to provide the best information to the townspeople, the twelve thousand people that are going to be here to live with this mess, if you will. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington. Thank you, thank you, Chairman McKnight. Pass it back to you.
Great, thank you. Rachel, what I'd like to do, and we've got another public hearing tonight, so I'd like to take no more than the next twenty-five minutes in fairness to the other other public hearings. So we are not going to open this up to a wide breadth of commentary from those on that are here from the public. This is an informational session. It's our first collaborative meeting. We're trying to share information and get it out, and I think to that end, Rachel, without going through the whole presentation, it would be good, what we wanted to understand was Rachel, without going through the whole presentation, it would be good, what we wanted to understand was the process that you and, and the engineer that, that was hired or, or was granted to us went through, how, what were the guardrails? And then how did you move from, and I don't think we need to look at every site in town. I think we get down to the, hey, you know, we had, we got to two, but we had 10, you know, and these were the sites and here's why we excluded them for whatever reason. So that gives us a little bit more breadth and depth on, on what you looked at, why you looked at it, why you excluded it, what the guardrails were. That might help us all understand whether things fit into the bylaw or the law that's, that's being presented to us or they didn't from your perspective and the consultant's perspective by reading the, the law. So um, with that also, just one last comment. I believe that the planning board's role in this is to make a recommendation that we may not all vote to approve it, which means that I think in this case, the planning board recommends favorable action, no action, or uh, last one is, uh, negative action, right? But my question is, if we're creating the sites and we're going to present and vote on them as a planning board, are there other options that anyone else, zoning board, planning board, outside the planning board, can create at town meeting to give the townspeople other options versus the one the planning board is acting on? Or is it strictly our recommended or not recommended proposal?
So I did see something on the Mass Plan or Listserve that sort of did talk about this and, um, you know, says to work with your moderator. Um, so that way those type of on-town meeting floor amendments, um, don't happen. And that's only because the language of the public hearing notice has, is very specific. And that's why, essentially. But that is why you're also having the public hearings too, you know?
And that is the role of the board is to create an option? Vote on it and the vote would be one of those three, not to approve or disapprove, but to vote favorable action. Is that?
Yes.
Favorable action, no action, or, so it, it's a little bit complex in terms of how this is going to get to town floor. I just want to let everybody know how, what the planning board's role in this is and that, you know, we can, we can choose one of those three on something that we actually created. So it's a little bit strange in the way this is going to all come about town meeting floor. But hopefully we get to that point with one agreed, uh, recommended option. So I'll turn it over to you, Rachel, for, uh, maybe, you know, a few minutes of helping people understand how you got to, where you got to and, and what some of the other sites are that we might want to think about and put back on the table.
Okay, I will, I am the only, um, person on this. So if you send me a chat while I am doing this, I'm not going to read it. Um, I just, I can't do all the things at once. Sorry, guys. Um, all right, here, let's share. Don't be scared. I wasn't ever going to go through all 47 slides. Um, I'm going to stop my video. Um, so that way we have a little bit more. Let's get this out of my way. Um, okay, so I was going to go through all these things. Introduction, overview of law guidelines, what is required to comply. Site selection, I think we'll focus on, uh, these two as well. So let's go down here. Um, so this was essentially the new section three A of, uh, the zoning act, um, which created MBTA community and sort of guardrails of as to, um, how to locate these items. At least one district of reasonable size. Go ahead and read that. This is just the text of the law. Going through site selection, um, I'm sure a couple of you on this, uh, in this board committees are on do land development. So you probably understand this site selection process already. Um, I'm going to shorten it down. Uh, so they're just general principles in the compliance. So there's the law as, um, has been noted. But then there were also within that law, the MBTA, um, HLC were promulgated, I can't say that word. Criteria of guidelines, um, for compliance. And so these are just the general, uh, principles, uh, on that. So understanding that even though, yes, we don't have a transit station, we do benefit from proximity, um, to transit stations. The districts required by three A should be, should encourage the development of multifamily housing projects of a scale, density and aesthetic that are compatible with existing surrounding uses and minimize impacts to sensitive land. Reasonable size, they understand is relative and not everybody, um, is the same. They understand all 77 communities are different. Um, and so within those guidelines, um, you have separate requirements. Um, and then when possible, uh, these districts should be in areas that have safe, accessible and convenient access to transit stations for pedestrians and cyclists. And these other ones, um, will be, I will include them in the final one, um, to let you go to a little bit deeper into the thought process of how we got here. But for the sake of time, I am skipping ahead. Um, so this is just a summary of essentially what you need to do. Uh, zoning must allow multifamily housing as of right. That does not mean that they just come in with a plan and they immediately get a building permit. As part of this, uh, what the state is asking you to do, not only zone for it, it's also asking you to create, um, regulations. And within that, you can require a site plan review. Um, and there's a whole bunch of things that you can require as part of, uh, that they include. Um, that would be reviewed by, uh, you know, an engineer, a peer reviewer, they still have to meet stormwater requirements, they still have to meet uh, wetland requirements and septic requirements. Um, the zone must be of reasonable size. For us, it's 50 acres. You can do 25 contiguous and five, five acres or, um, 50 acres in total. Um, if you do that first one, the sub districts can have varying densities. So to match, um, again, the area that you're sort of looking at. The minimum gross density has to be 15 units per acre and a unit capacity of 750 units. This is not a production mandate. Um, so these homes don't have to be built. Um, we're not, not, it's not like, uh, chapter 40B where you're required to have these built. And also the town isn't required to build the infrastructure to, um, accommodate these, similar to other projects, the developer, that would be on the developer's tab. Um, and again, just another way of saying what I just said, um, proximity to major routes and thoroughfares, uh, proximity to pedestrian and, uh, biking infrastructure, these are things to think about when you're looking for a site. Existing, uh, downtown village center, shopping areas and places of employment, proximity to schools, uh, recreational opportunities, uh, protection of preservation and preservation of the environment. Uh, inclusion of affordable housing, um, potential for redevelopment of abandoned vacant or underutilized buildings and lots. Um, and, um, just making sure that the site constraints, uh, that make it, that may make it more difficult to develop. Um, so again, going back to this, um, little map here. These were just all the sites that we looked at. Um, I put in asterisks, uh, areas that were submitted as part of the action plan in March 2022, uh, which was a requirement for MBTK, MBTA communities to be an interim compliance with the law. Um, the revised final guidelines were released in August, uh, of 2023, which at that point, um, public land was not allowed, um, to be included in these areas. So that's why you see the Brenton Development Center is off the list. Uh, the Chestnut Mount Street that we'll get to it when we, excuse me, when we get there. Okay. Um, so, and again, once we, we did run these through, it's not just picking a site. Um, you also have to run it through a spreadsheet or a compliance model, um, to make sure that all the proposed locations, um, meet those requirements. Um, and so this is kind of what's involved in it. It was a GIS mapping, um, and a spreadsheet. And even though I love spreadsheets, I could not do this one. So that's why we had the engineer help us out with that.
Rachel, could you do me a favor and go back one slide?
Let's see.
To that map with the circles on it?
Yeah.
So how did you land at these two, four, six, eight, nine circles versus other parts of the town that aren't?
Well, I'm not going to, uh, I'm, I don't think you, you, you or the town doesn't want anything in West Brenton. That's for sure. Um, and again, that was also a kind of, I did an overview, but in these other slides, it kind of goes through that. Um, not only looking at the law, you're looking at the guidelines, you then look at your master plan, you then look at, there's some, uh, the Commonwealth sustainable, um, development practices. And so, and some of these areas were just, somebody said, hey, what about this area? Okay. I, I'll include it. Um, I didn't say no. If somebody, um, sent me an area to look at, I looked at it. And while I may not have run it through the whole compliance model, um, because that's a, that's only for sites that we thought might actually work. Um, I did consider it at least to the, um, the high level, um, items. And so the Retham Development Center, the, uh, downtown Green Street, High Street, Hagopian Red Bird Farm. Um, these, uh, I think it was, we discussed it with, I think it might've been you and maybe one other board member, it might've been Jim or Chuck, uh, Joe Botech and Chris Gallo and, um, uh, Kevin. And this, these were the ones that we were going to submit as part of the action plan. Um, and I think at that point, we really wanted to go for the Retham Development Center. Um, but as I said, uh, the revised guidelines came out in August of 23 and said that we cannot use publicly owned, uh, land as part of that. Does that answer your question?
It does. I, just for everybody's identification, just trying to, you know, if you take to the left of circle two and to the right of circle two up by Norfolk and Rentham, there's some pretty big tracts of land. And just curious, the, you know, kind of the rationale for, um, leaving out sections of the town. And maybe it's because it's all built up and you wouldn't be able to get, uh, acreage there. And maybe it's not the most desirable. I'm just trying to figure out what the rationale is for saying these, these are, these are in and other areas that we haven't circled are out just automatically.
Yeah, sure. So, um, uh, as your master plan that, um, has like only a few areas to sort of focus on. So why work smarter, not harder? This was a two-year process that got 10% response rate, which is, I know some people don't think that's a lot, but in the planning world, it's quite a bit to get a 10th percent response rate on surveys. And so these were the areas that the town wanted to focus on. Um, and then if you go into these, it goes into a little bit more what each of these mean, priority growth, economic, um, and historic preservation, all those items. Um, so that's really why, uh, Development Center and Town Center are really the, the big areas. And then when that one didn't work, tried to figure out some other ones. Um, and also if you look on here, I could bring up the GIS, but there's a lot of wetlands in here on this one, as well as over here. As you know, this is the Park Place, um, subdivision right up here. And this is all Mill Pond. Um, and so that's all wet. And that area can't be included in a, um, uh, it's not included in, it take, it's, it takes, it is taken out of, um, the developable land area. So you can't count it towards your 50 acre requirement.
And as you said before, 25, you have to have one 25 and then you can have multiples of the other 25.
Yes.
Okay.
Five at five acres and they can all have different, uh, densities, all those sub districts.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so again, went through there, ru- run it through the, that, uh, compliance spreadsheet, um, and then we'll get into them. Okay. So, and this was just a recap from my last, uh, presentation. Um, this one is a three different 40Bs and actually, you know, looking and adding this one as well. Some of this is, uh, over 55, so that can't be included. Um, and again, there's a lot, there's three different zoning districts in here. And as part of the compliance model, you run the underlying zoning through that. Um, so not really near an existing downtown or village center, um, higher unit density to get to the state compliance. Um, and again, required a lot of changes to the underlying zoning, um, because there's three different districts in there. Um, I'll run through these quick, uh, site evaluation on the Retham Development Center. That's, I went over that already. Um, public land can't be included. Um, site evaluation, these were the two options that, um, we, the consultants and I, um, settled on. Uh, which was ma- making a mandatory mixed use overlay or, uh, for the downtown, um, to take credit for that development that's already happening in downtown. And then creating a traditional, quote unquote, traditional, um, MBTA community multifamily overlay district over at the Wampum 495. And then option two was just Wampum 495 without the downtown. Um, if option one requires changes to, um, the village zone B, um, to make sure that the 2018, uh, rezoning vision is, um, you know, the, a developer adheres to that. Uh, option one, here it is, uh, mandatory mixed use, uh, with the MBTA multifamily, uh, you can get a reduction in, um, I think it's 25%. Uh, so 562 was what you'd have to have. This is just some, some of the things that we would look at if we were going to do this, um, of changing in the village zone B. Uh, option two, if we don't go with that and just do the quote unquote, traditional, um, the, all these lots, 16 units per acre, 25% lot coverage, we maintained all of the existing, uh, dimensional standards for the, that are in the residential 43, which is front setback of 40, side yard setback 25. Um, max stories is only two and a half. So these are not, these are not, this is not a ledge view project. Um, it's two and a half stories. Um, and a lot coverage of 25%. Um, I did do some other 31 Dedham Street is kind of, um, the similar, trying to find some examples for you in future, uh, presentations about how to look at it. And this is just some of the amenities, um, around Wampum 495 area that are very much in line with what the state is looking for in this, in this, uh, guidelines and law. Site evaluation on Chestnut, Chestnut Street, there's a lot of issues with this site. There's steep slopes, there's wetlands, there's at least three different, um, easements that go through this property. All making this, um, infeasible to, um, develop. And if you were going to develop, it's going to be right up against those house, the backyards of those houses on Chestnut Street. So um, site evaluation on Green Street, again, I'm maybe a more traditionalist commercially zoned in a split, uh, tax rate town. Um, you're going to get less taxes, uh, on residential use in a commercial zone. Um, not consistent with the existing development patterns. Um, it's all industrial down there, not near an existing downtown or village center. Um, not really good for families with children. Cause it's, I mean, if we're Metacoma Greenway, it's kind of near there. Um, site evaluation, Beach and Taunton Street, uh, large portions of this area are, um, as you know, because we're going to, going through the permitting process on these, um, natural resources, also portion of this site is going to be age restricted. So that is a concern. Uh, site evaluation on Route one, um, we did both of these to, I think we looked at both of these together. Um, and again, um, to, you know, so you can take credit for an existing development. Um, so that's still on the cards if that's what you desire. Uh, again, commercially zoned, split tax rate, um, not consistent. This is all commercial. Also, you guys just did a re- a rezoning of Route one only a few years ago. I did not see multifamily housing in there, um, not near an existing village downtown center. There is no safe access to, um, pedestrian or bike, um, facilities. I know in the time that I've been here, there's been quite a few deaths on Route one. Um, so and then this one was the select board request of the Retham Village Premium Outlets. Again, it's commercially zoned, split tax rate. Um, it is not an underutilized facility. Um, the state is very, um, clear on this. It's not an underutilized facility that can be, um, redeveloped into new multifamily housing. So that's why this one was not included in that. Um, I don't consider the village outlets, um, to be underutilized. And then I'll go into what if we don't comply, but we'll stop there for now.
Is there, is there a state definition for underutilized? I mean, if the village outlets are running an 80% vacancy or a 10% vacancy rate, uh, 20% vacancies, you know, that does, still doesn't seem that way, but there's legal interpretations maybe that we could try to find out on what does underutilized actually mean? Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, yeah, Rachel, would, did, I don't know how big the parcel is or whatever, but what about talking about underutilized things? What about that, uh, Campgrounds of America development that nobody's ever moved into across from the Retham Outlets?
Yeah. So I had considered that one too. Um, the only reason I didn't include it in here was because it's already about from the street grade, it's already about From the street grade, it's already about a story to two stories higher than the street grade. And so then that's going to make a two and a half story or three-story building. Look like it's five stories, and so that's going to be very. Imposing on the surrounding air neighbors of. It's Berry, Nickerson to Berry Street over there. So that's why it wasn't included, because. They're not required to take out land, you know, and do an earth removal operation to bring it down to grade. So that's why I didn't include it.
But it, but it is.
I don't think it's all fifty acres either. I don't think it's all fifty, so you'd still need to find some more spots for it.
Yeah, it is underutilized, though. It's been vacant for years. Maybe that's, you know.
Is an underutilized facility. The outlets is not an underutilized facility.
But it might be.
We've been wondering what could possibly happen there for, ever since I've been on this board, which is over a decade. You know, I mean, if, if we, if we, you know, if that could be made to work and, and, and we decide we're going to do something, that might be. It might have some potential.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, do you mind if I?
I am adding it to the list now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please, I'm good.
Uh, Mister Chair, is that okay if I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair Gal.
Thank you, Jim McKnight. Just to provide a tiny bit of clarity, the reason that we suggested the outlets was a couple-prong. You know, we're taking the, we're, we're taking the mentality here that. The outlets is our largest commercial tax base. It's no surprise to anyone, I think it's three million dollars a year, if I'm not mistaken, someone can correct me if that number's wrong. It's no surprise to anyone what's going on with the outlets in Kittery. If the outlets in Rentham ever shut down, that would be a catastrophic. Catastrophic hit to our tax revenue. So that's one of the reasons why we thought that if something ever happened to the outlets. We, we, we might actually want a seven hundred and fifty-unit residential development that has, you know, the outlets actually has a lot of things going for it that I think. And that we think make it a viable candidate. It's got its own package plant, it's got, you know, it's, it's, it's directly off the highway. I understand it's not near a downtown. And if I'm reading the, the zone incorrectly, those are, you know, things that they would like to see, but they don't, you don't have to have it directly downtown or near. Public transportation or whatever. So my job isn't to make it easy for them. My job is to do what's best for the town, and that's what I'm trying to do. So that's why we think the outlets is a viable option, and one that we would like the planning board to strongly consider.
Right, thank you, Vice Chair Gal. Rachel question. Somebody threw out some wild ideas, and it's not that they couldn't be developed, there'd be a cost structure to it, but there's, if there's areas in town that are. For lack of a better word, polluted or undesirable to development. Or the town dump, you know, and somebody may find that they could line a dump and put piles in and build over it and. Never have a problem. Are those options that we don't have uses for? And it would be a costly enterprise for a developer, but it's not to say that those things couldn't be. Thrown on the list as options and likely because of the cost not built.
No. That is one of the items that they say other constraints that would make it so infeasible for it to be developed, for it to be ever developed.
Well, it's, it's not that it couldn't be. I've, we've, I've seen developments over, you know, over all kinds of stuff.
I, what you have to do, you as a board, as a town. I am not the final say. I am not the state. I am not the Attorney General's office. What you as a board, as a town, have to provide something that, you know, you think is going to be comfortable to the townsfolk. And let them vote. This is a very new law. So I don't have all the answers. And I don't think the state has all the answers. So I think once we do figure out where we want to sort of focus this, I would strongly suggest submitting a pre-application to the, to the state. To see if it does pass. And see if it does fall within these guidelines. That, or these guardrails that they've put up. So I, I've, I've read them in a certain way. And I, you know, it's, it's up to you. It's not for me to argue one way or the other. This is, I've had a recommendation. Based on how I've understood this law and guidelines for the past three years. So.
Mister Chairman McKnight, may, may I, may I make a statement?
Yes.
Good. In all due respect, Rachel, in your presentation, though, you are telling us that it needs to be downtown. It needs to be feasible for families and children. It needs to be desirable for developers. In reviewing other towns and what they are zoning, I am seeing Shrewsbury zoning right next to Route Nine, Route Twenty. Going against things that are being, options that are being presented to us as a town. So this is what's raising questions because we're seeing other towns. Do just the opposite than what's being proposed to us. And for me, and I'll speak, you know, I'm not going to speak for the entire select board, but my guess is, it's their sentiments as well. My concern is our current residents. And this town, so to make things feasible for developers and feasible for new families moving in, not, not my priority. My priority is to do the right thing for the town. As well, as it relates to this mandate. So I know that you're saying that it's our decision, but in your presentation and giving us these parcels to look at. You are stating, needs to be downtown, needs to be feasible for families and children, needs to have sidewalks. And now you're saying you don't have all the answers. So just try to be respectful to. Giving the right information to all of us that we make the right decisions as it relates to these parcels.
Thank you. But I think what I'd like to do now is, we've spent about an hour and a half, or a bit more, a little bit less than that on this. What I would ask is, I think we're obligated to open up for public comment, but what I would ask is not. Going to do short, very short segments, I think, like thirty seconds. For people, because this is information sharing, we're not, we're not going to go into depth on these things, but what I would like to know is if anybody has a question. That they would like answered as part of the public comment versus giving us an opinion. So that we can take that comment or that question. And get back to folks. We may not have the answer tonight, and I'm not sure we're going to spend the time deliberating on it tonight, what the answer to that is. But I think it would be important for us to know. That you have something that doesn't make sense to you in terms of the information you've been provided. So from a public comment standpoint for tonight's meeting, I'd like to focus a very narrow. View into that versus commentary and or opinions. So. We'll give it.
On it? Do you want me to put a time limit on these again?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it doesn't take long to, to, to ask a question, so we're going to maybe limit it to thirty seconds a person or something. We're not gonna, I don't think we're here tonight to answer those questions. But let us, allow us to look those over and get answers back either through. Through the Board of Selectmen or the website, or through the next planning board meeting we have, and that way we can at least understand. What's not clear to people that we can start to focus on finding answers for. So. With that, we'll open it up. Please raise your hand if you have. A question to ask either the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board or EDC or the Assessor.
Mister Eminan has his hand raised.
Name, address, and affiliation, please, or.
Leo Eminan, six fifty East Street. My question is, if the town approves a zoning bylaw in compliance with the State Act in November. Can we go ahead and listen, hear a debate by the federal state government and the legal part? If it turns out it's not legal, can we then go ahead and delete that zoning bylaw at a town meeting perhaps in June twenty twenty-five?
Thank you, Mister Eminan, for that question. I don't have an answer. We'll find out and make sure it gets answered. Other questions that you might have that we can get back to you on?
I see Andrea has their hand raised.
Name and address, please.
Hang on, I'm trying to get this on. Hi, Andrea Murphy, sixteen eighty West Street. I'm not, so I'm not going to ask this right. I was just, I, I wasn't prepared to ask a question, but the, so I was going to try to look up this information before I said it. I just read something recently about. It, it, it's like, it was like a nursing home. There was a settlement that the state had just donated money for. It's not assisted living, it's not a nursing home, it's something like that. I'll find this information for you, but I'm wondering if something like that qualifies for. The type of units that could be put in the town.
Okay, thank you.
You can just leave that as a to look, yeah. Thank you, thank you very much.
Take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other hands. Rachel, do you see anybody?
Mister DePlacido has his hand raised.
Yes, sir.
Just as a, as a citizen, curious if, if and when a parcel lands rezoned and seven hundred and fifty units are, are added. Does that, it, it, my understanding is you don't have to have affordable in those seven hundred and fifty units. Is that correct on that? Or can you have affordable units in those seven hundred and fifty units? Okay, and where I was leading with this was that it seems to me like you'd want to have, you know. A significant amount of affordable units to compensate for the seven hundred and fifty units that you would be adding. Because your denominator as a whole town. Now you'd have, if you're adding seven hundred and fifty units to the town's housing inventory. You'd actually then have to have ten percent more affordable, or basically seventy-five more units of affordability just to stay in compliance.
That's a good point. Thank you, Mister DePlacido.
So, all right.
Last call. There'll be more opportunities to ask questions, certainly.
Joanna McFarlane?
Oops, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister McKnight. This actually isn't a question or comment, but unfortunately, the EDC did not have a forum tonight, so we were not able to publicly participate. But as a resident, I was hoping to give the town and the boards an update as to what the EDC has been doing. And we have had a couple of working group sessions, small working group sessions, our last being this past Monday with Rachel and a few of our members. Just going over the parcels, trying to really get an understanding of, you know, is, is in-depth of an understanding of what we need to do as a town. And what the EDC is really concentrating on is vacant or underutilized lots in the town. That we have rezoned several parcels of town over the last decade. And they haven't been moving on the commercial side. So we're trying to look at those as, would those potentially work as having the MBTA zoning overlay? And perhaps that could stimulate some kind of development.
Great, thank you for that update. All right, with that, I think.
Mary Sen has raised her hand.
Okay.
Yeah, just to follow up with Mrs. McFarlane's comment, I just wanted to ask about the Crosby, Old Crosby Pipe Site. Because that was a environmental cleanup site, so just want to make sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted on that one, because if you do develop that. And there's issues, you don't want this town to get sued over problems with that site, because that is a very, that's been an open. Area that could be developed, and as you rightly so, you said that, but I just was wondering about the environmental study, if that's all been sorted out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mister Sweet, were you raising your hand or, or no?
Yeah, Mister Chair, I was just going to ask and maybe through you to Rachel or the planning board as a whole, is the planning board? Had discussions or going to have discussions around the mandatory mixed-use component, which would reduce the requirements for. The seven hundred and fifty units? I'm just wondering if there's been talks about that, which I think Rachel would know better than I, would put the, the maximum unit count at around five eighty or five something. Just looking to see, I think, I haven't heard any of that tonight, so, and I'm not sure that folks are aware of that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. And we do have a relatively new board. We've got three new, three new members, so this was a really good. Information gathering for them, and I think that's something we put on the list in terms of trying to reduce that number if we can through mixed use. To Miss Sen's note, the downtown is, is been rezoned into, into. Different components, and we have a developer who's interested in, in building down there. So that actually, I think that mixed-use development can give us some leverage too. They've already got eight units per. As a maximum to that development. So there's, there's definitely some, some possibility that that's going to help us. With that being said, Mister DePlacido, I think we're all set. Do you want to close your public hearing? And thank you.
Yeah, I make a motion for the Board of Assessors to close their public hearing. Once again, I don't think Ed O'Neill or Irene Leveque can, can make a comment on it, so on their behalf, I'll close the public hearing.
Right, thank you for your participation, Mister DePlacido. Vice Chair Gallo and, and the Select Board, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir, Mister Chair, we're going to also take a roll call vote right now to adjourn. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I look forward to doing many more with the planning board. It's been great. At this time, Vice Chair, entice motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectwoman Rouse with the roll call vote. Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Rouse, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes, motion passes four zero. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you so much. Do we have the planning board have a motion to continue the public hearing on MBTA community zoning to our next meeting on? What is it, the seventeen? No.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion, we have a second discussion. Roll call vote, Mister Boassi.
Aye.
Mister English?
Aye.
Mister Lawrence?
Aye.
Mister Maloney?
Aye.
Mister Urban?
Aye.
Mister Woodhams? I heard it. Mike McDight, aye, seven in favor, no one opposed. Motion carries. And. Go ahead, Mister Lawrence, if you'd like.
No, I would not per se, but I, I just wanted to. Note that is my birthday, so I don't have any plans not to be on this call, but I may not be on this call by the time it comes around.
All right. We good to continue to the last public hearing of the evening?
Um, yes, I moved that we. Open the continued, reopen the continued public hearing on Ten Commerce Boulevard.
Give a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have any discussion? Roll call vote, Mister Boassi.
Aye.
Mister English?
Aye.
Mister Lawrence?
Aye.
Mister Maloney?
Aye.
Mister Urban?
Aye.
Mister Woodhams?
Aye.